All right, so I will call the Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee. Your regular meeting to order, councilors present, myself, Councillor McBride and Councillor Westervelt. Calendar and communications. I have nothing to report other than I received a correspondence this afternoon from in assistant clerk informing us that Dick Fitzgerald, who serves on the zoning board of appeals, resigned due to a move, resigned from the zoning board of appeals, therefore there is a vacancy. We did have two applications pending with respect to zoning board of appeals last week. I'm sorry, last month, we did move forward Republican Bruce McDermott to the zoning board of appeals. We do have an outstanding application for name escapes me, James Philippina, who also applied for the zoning board of appeals. I will defer to the to the council if we, I'm sorry, to the to the committee. If you would like to take action to move his forward, we can always clarify at the next meeting at the regular council meeting, whether that was permissible, but I I think again, considering that the candidate's application has been in the queue for more than sixty days. And they were not appointed due to the fact that there was only one vacancy. I I would be comfortable moving forward with their application with Mr. Philippina's application for the zoning board of appeals, that way we can fill promptly fill that vacancy that was created by Mr. Fitzgerald. But I will defer to the to the councillors for their opinion.
I believe that we could move forward with that. I'm comfortable with that recommendation as well.
Okay, excellent. All right, so. So I will make note of that. Approval of the minutes, I will entertain a motion to approve the February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two special meeting minutes. Second. So believe I made that motion and seconded by Westervelt. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three zero zero, on to new business. We will continue deliberations on various appointments for ABCs. Tonight, we will be filling the civilian and police committee. In total, there are six regular member openings, as well as filling a few other boards and commissions. I will start with. We do have one person who applicant who did come at our who did go to our previous meeting. Mister Ian Thomas. Mister Thomas serves on the RTM, he is the floor leader for the Democratic Party on the RTM. And he submitted an application to serve on the civilian and police committee as the ex officio non-voting member per our resolution that the council approved for to create to create the citizens and police committee. We we established two two positions, one for a regular count for a councillor, a town councillor, the other for an an RTM member to serve as an ex officio non-voting member on the committee. So we have two applications for that committee. I would note that in our in our agenda, there was a recommendation from the RTM moderator for specifically for the liaison position. And so I do want to clarify that this is not an RTM liaison position. It is within the it is within the purview of the RTM moderator to appoint any liaison to any board or commission, including the town council. And so this is a a position that is the the position we'll be voting on this evening is specifically for the ex officio non-voting member. So again, no matter the outcome of this, of how we vote this evening, the RTM moderator is still within her purview to appoint a to appoint a non-voting member. I'm sorry, to to appoint an RTM liaison. So with that, I will acknowledge Mister Thomas, if he had would like to share any words with us into entertain as well as to answer any questions committee members may have. So Mister Thomas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Baumgartner. Um, yeah, so I just, I'm pretty familiar with everyone on this committee. Long story short, I was served as chair of the Cork Committee, the Civilian Oversight and Research Committee that was in the RTM last year. And I, as as chair, helped manage that committee, compile a report that had to basically look at how civilian oversight of police and public safety could relate to the town of Groton, in particular to the charter and various other, you know, historical documents. So I'm hope by this time, most everyone has had a chance to read that report. So, you know, I think we ended up coming up with a a solid document. And the town council saw fit to move forward with the three consensus recommendations that came out of that committee. So I think it's a great first step as far as like looking at what we can do to improve community and police relations. And so I think I'm in a unique position as the chair of that committee, or you know, that that committee is now dissolved, but having served as chairs of that committee and having intimate knowledge of that report, that I could bring a good level of nuance to the conversation. And in helping, you know, guide this police and community group towards its 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 ultimate like formation, because from what I understand, there there's still like a good bit of things to be deliberated as far as once the group is formed, they have to kind of sort themselves out. So I I think I could be a good resource in that regard, given the the background and knowledge I have. Also, I work as a state school teacher in the Corrections Department. And as part of my training for that job, it was I did get trained as a corrections officer. So I do have some background with, you know, as far as the procedures and and policies that have to do with some level of law enforcement, obviously, like corrections officer and and police officer are different in some regards, but there are a lot of parallels as well. So I think also having that background would would lend itself to to would put me again in in a unique position where I could help people from different backgrounds, bridge the gap and communicate in in constructive ways. So that being said, I'm I'm open to any questions or concerns or comments that anyone has.
Thank you, Mister Thomas, for your remarks. Do councillors have any questions for Mister Thomas?
I have a question in regards to the process for this evening. Are we going to be asking numerous others as the other individual or other individuals? Will they be here as well to answer questions?
Um, I I do not see, I'm looking at attendees, I see the RTM member for District Two, Mister Jacome is in attendance. Hello, Mister Jacome. And Representative Jacome, and but I I do not see any any other applicants for any board or commission in in the queue. If that answers your question.
It does, and I guess I'm just confused because I'm new to this. My understanding may be incorrect, was that these all of these individuals would be present tonight for possible discussions? Is that how the process works or no?
Not not regularly. You know, we articulated at the previous meeting and offline with Clerk McCauser. We will make it standard protocol, or we have made it standard protocol for the Clerk's Office to reach out to every applicant for boards or commissions prior to for for to for the opportunity to meet or speak with the council or with this committee prior to deliberations. However, in past precedent, more often than not, folks do not attend, and our council has or this committee has regularly voted on applications without interviewing or hearing from candidates. And again, it is, I will note that Mister Thomas did attend at the previous meeting. He, I know somebody who who doesn't meet miss a beat with meetings and is very proactive about participating. So, but yes, that that is in establish, that is a precedent I have. I would like to establish and have made abundantly clear to the Clerk's Office that before that to for her office to reach out to every applicant prior to to a meeting to at least provide them the courtesy to to attend the meeting or simply inform them that the meeting will be taking place where the council will be likely acting on their application.
Okay, I have some other questions, but I'll yield the floor, Councillor.
Councillor Westervelt?
Um, I have no questions at this time.
I see Councillor Cassiri, though she is not a committee member, I will recognize her. Hello, Councillor Cassiri.
Thank you, Chair Baumgartner, for recognizing me. I just have two questions for Representative Thomas. My first is, are you already a liaison for the RTM?
Um, yeah, I was just informed at the last meeting that apparently they made me the Board of Ed RTM. But that was not made known to me until about three or four days ago.
Okay, thank you. And are there any other Republican liaisons on the RTM that you're aware of?
Um, honestly, I'm not I'm not that familiar with it as far as like the Republican side of things. However, long story short, I would, this body would, well, first and foremost, I'm not, I'm not here for the liaison position, I'm here for the ex officio position on this on this body. And two, if if there was concerns about what I would prioritize, I would prioritize this body if I had to choose as far as the police and civilians together. But no, I'm not aware of who the Republican liaisons are or to what bodies they've been assigned by the RTM moderator.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McBride.
Yeah, I guess I'm I'm just confused, because I was expecting to ask questions of numerous people today, so I feel it unfair just to ask Representative Thomas these questions without being able to answer others to ask those questions.
Mister Thomas, would do you take issue with him asking any question to you?
Oh, I don't, but you know, I do share to some extent of the concern. I mean, I I understand. I was under the impression that everyone was invited to come tonight. Anyone that had their name on the docket for any position. So I'm not sure if they chose not to or what, but I'm I'm happy to answer any question.
Well, I'll ask a couple of questions, although just the process seems a little bizarre. Just regarding your commitment, I wonder how many hours per quarter do you think members of this committee should serve?
Um, well, you know, that kind of depends on the level of engagement the group wants to wants to move towards, which, you know, I defer to the civilians who have voting power to to determine that. Roughly, I mean, I I think, you know, quarterly meetings would be, you know, honestly, I think having monthly meetings with the committee would probably be a good way to 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 establish a foothold and start forming the foundation of the group and just kind of build some momentum towards like, you know, establishing the lines of communication that need to exist. You know, so I I know in the in the in the resolution, there was some mention of like at minimum a quarterly meeting schedule, which honestly, I'd rather see something a little more you know, regular as far as monthly meetings. And in the meetings, I would anticipate probably like, you know, two to three hours each, you know, depending on what, how they want to structure the meetings, but you know, much depends on on the civilians and and, you know, the police personnel's level of engagement and kind of like what they want to see done. I mean, if they want to make a conversational group kind of around Robin, that's one form. You know, if they want to kind of hold it more like a board where there there's a little more structure to it. You know, that's another option. And so, but I would I would say probably per month, you know, per per meeting, you know, about two to three hours, and then probably one meeting a month at the minimum would be my recommendation. And, you know, maybe upwards of once every two weeks, just to get started. If people want to kind of really get to know each other and kind of get a sense of what they're doing.
Thank you. This is somewhat unrelated, but it's a question I'd like to ask. Do you well, somewhat interrelated, I think, do you believe the current police department has the proper budget, resources, vehicles, body cameras, training, and other related equipment to provide the proper policing functions for the town?
To my, to the extent of my understanding, yeah, I I believe they're pretty well funded as it stands. You know, we'd have to go into the nuts and bolts of it as far as like where the money's being spent, but I think overall this department's done a fine job with the resources it's been given. And, you know, I'm I'm all in favor of the the social worker position that they've put in, and you know, I I do appreciate the body cam investments they made over the years. And no, I think they've done a great job with the money they've been given. And you know, I like, I look forward to to working with them in the future.
All right, one one last question regarding some knowledge. Can you provide your own opinion and thoughts as to how many, if any, if any, training you and other members of this commission should receive in order to be a member of this commission?
Well, you know, I I kind of went into detail on that on my individual recommendation section from the Cork Report. You know, I think there there's anyone that's on this body should be willing to volunteer a good bit of time towards immerse immersing themselves in in some training, some level of training. So I would say, I think I made mention of like about, you know, one ride along per quarter and, you know, basically like not having anything too rigid or but just, you know, once a quarter, you know, one person, you know, stepping forward and and kind of participating in some level of training, some aspect of training, that then they could come back and share their experience with the group. And maybe that could be set up in a staggered fashion. So like, once a month, there'd be another committee member doing some kind of training with the police so that they could come back to the committee group and kind of share their experience of what it was like to be a civilian going through that training.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And are there any other questions for Mister Thomas? All right, seeing none, I I will just note, Mister Thomas, your application was incredibly thorough. Just in terms of your answers to what you know about this board, you stated, I served as chair of the Civilian Oversight Research Committee, the body that created the report that led to the formation of this committee. I've been tracking its progress and development over the many months the town council delivered over its construction. So obviously, you're intimately aware of what the, you know, the mandate and the purpose of the committee is, as you really, you know, chaired chaired it, you know, the Court Court Committee and led those discussions. You know, in terms of the your education background, work experiences that would help you fulfill your responsibility as a member. As you stated earlier, you're you're currently employed with the CD Department of Corrections, State School, a state school teacher, GED instructor and assistant with the reentry program. You were trained as a corrections officer at the State Academy. You're familiar with all sides on the issue in regards to police and community relations and have family that have served in law enforcement, as well as those who had interactions with the law. So clearly, we're well balanced there. Civically, you know, you're you're involved with the town committee, the DT, DCDC, and as well as the RTM floor leader. And you have no time constraints that would limit your ability. So I I believe you're incredibly capable and qualified for this. And with that, I will make a motion to nominate Mister Thomas to the as the ex officio non-voting RTM member to the citizens and police committee. So moved.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion, and I think Mister Westervelt was muted, but I will entertain Mister McBride's, Councillor McBride's second. So any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously, one, three, zero, zero. Congratulations, Mister Thomas.
Thank you all, and best of luck on the rest of the evening. I will kind of remain in the background if there's any other questions. And are you considering other members for the the civilian members?
Yes, we'll we'll be going through those applications now and a bevy of other applications.
Well, if there's any questions or concerns about like, you know, the how that might relate to the Cork Report, I'm I'm here at your service as far as like any insight or suggestions I might be able to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Thomas. All right, so seeing there are no other folks in in the queue. I I know that councillors have or committee members have had the opportunity to review all of the applications for some time now. There were three, four, five, six, seven, in total thirteen individuals who applied. I will note, it is like pulling teeth to find volunteers for many of our boards or commissions. So this is a really good problem to have, to have so many folks who are interested in serving on our boards or commissions. Obviously, you know, with only six slots, there will be nine individuals that will not be chosen, and I would still encourage those individuals to participate in our meet in future committee meetings, they will be open. The public, I'm certain, you know, and we will be able to attend. And so in and I would also note that should a member like to serve on a board or commission, there are other vacancies as well. Folks who are looking to get involved or civically engaged, you can reach out to the Clerk's Office again and apply to serve on one of our ABCs. So again, we have six members. I have had a chance to review all of them. I will be, well, I'll I'll start. I will make a motion to approve Kyle Mesia Thaxton to the Police and Citizens Committee. So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Baumgartner, second by McBride. Any discussion? I will note that Mister Mesia Thaxton did speak with us at our previous meeting, had a very thorough interview. I would note, it would, it would behoove, you know, I think our our committee to to have youth representation, to have a somebody who who is a a young person in our community, obviously, a very important perspective and somebody who is looking to roll up their sleeves and contribute to the town. And so I thank Kyle for for that. And I will, if there are no other, if there's no other discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, aye? Oppose, abstentions, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. So that is one appointment. I will make a motion to approve Kathy Velez to or to appoint Kathy Velez to the Citizens and Police Committee. So moved.
I'll second.
Motion, Baumgartner, second by Westervelt. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will just note that Miss Velez has a very, very impressive resume. She bear with me, there are a lot of applications, I just want to get to her application. She is, she graduated from the University of Connecticut with a bachelor bachelors in psychology, a BA in psychology, and earned her masters in social work from UConn. She is a MDFT clinician at the Child and Family Agency of Southeastern Connecticut. And again, her resume really speaks for her for itself, but she really, she she did a very thorough application, so I I will be enthusiastically supporting her this evening and think again, she will make a great addition to our to our board. So seeing no other discussions, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye, aye? Oppose? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. I will, given that there are three members on this committee, I will defer to another councillor to make a motion with respect to nominating a member of the citizens and police committee. I did, I did see Councillor McBride's hand. So Mister, Councillor McBride, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion and recommend Randall Ortega to this commission. Reviewing his application, his resume seemed to be valuable experience as a city attorney. I think he would assist with the citizens and police commission. A lot of police matters involve areas that he has experienced in personal injury, criminal defense, and related matters. And he also serves as a mediator and hearing officer. So I think he'll bring some depth and some valuable experience to this committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by McBride. Second, bear with me, I'm sorry, just making sure, just taking notes accurately. A motion by McBride, second by Westervelt. Any discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment that I know Mister Ortega from various activities that he and I have been involved with, and I think he's going to be a great addition to this to this organization. I think it's a great fit. Thank you very much, Randy, for stepping forward for that.
I I'd like to align my remarks with Councillor Westervelt and Mister Councillor McBride. I I will not restate all the the points on Councillor McBride made, but a very impressive resume. I think it'll be very valuable to have his perspective, so I will be supporting him as well. Seeing no other hands, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Congratulations, Mister Ortega. I will also note Mister Ortega is an unaffiliated.
If I can move forward, I'd also like to make the recommendation for Tammy Dela Cruz to be appointed to this committee. We all know Tammy and her involvement in the community speaks speaks out initiative, and I think she'll be very valuable to this committee as well. Working with the various police agencies, as she's noted, she also had a very strong application and some of the mental health issues and substance abuse items that she she works with day to day will not necessarily day to day, but works with those items will certainly help this committee. You know, in terms of the extension of her involvement, I think would be beneficial for this committee.
And I will second that nomination. So motion by McBride, second by Baumgartner. Any other discussion? I would just like to align my remarks with Councillor McBride. I think she is incredibly capable and qualified to serve on this board, given her breadth of experiences, both professionally and personally. Very important voice to have as part of this group and very much look forward to to seeing her lead her service and leadership on this committee. Seeing no other discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing this this is Tammy Dela Cruz to the Citizens and Police Committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Any abstention? Any abstention? Motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero.
If I may have the floor?
Yes, Counselor Westerville.
I would like to make a motion for Dana Parfit for the Civilian and Police Committee. I believe the fit with as much, as much volunteer and extra work as has been done. It's a very impressive resume, and I think this is a good fit for our group.
I will second that nomination. Any discussion? Just note, I have known Ms. Parfit for many years as well, and her several civic capacities, I'm very involved in the community. I have previously served on the RTM and also involved with her children and grandchildren's schools. And is a wonderful committee member. And I know the committee will be better with her service as well. So seeing no other discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing Mrs. Dana Parfit to the Police and Citizens Committee, please indicate by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero.
If I may continue, I would like to make a motion for John Goodrich to be a member of the Police Committee. I've known John, he's a, he's a passionate individual. He's worked hard, he's got Groton in his best interest. I've seen that directly. He's a very involved individual, and I think he'll be a good voice on our panel.
All right, I will second that nomination. Any discussion?
I have some questions on that nomination, and it's not anything that I know directly. But I have had numerous individuals bring up some concerns to me with regards to him. And again, I don't know him personally, but it was referred to me that he has some extreme views. And I just wanted to raise that question, and Mr. Westerville, if you know him, I base it on your character, your character reference. But I, you know, like I said, numerous people say he's somewhat extreme and has some made up views already of the police and some other matters. And I just wanted to raise that concern if any of you are aware of any of those such items. Not sure if they're true, this is word of mouth. But I do feel it's in the best interest to inform both of you that I have had conversations with people that have some concerns of him being on this committee. With it being such a small committee, would he polarize it in one direction if he is, if that is in fact true? That he's somewhat one sided. So I just want to bring that to your attention. If you have any knowledge of that information, I just think it should be something we should consider.
If I may?
Counselor Westerville?
I've spoken with John on a number of issues and heard his explanations on a number of the things that have been brought up that you hear about. I'm satisfied that he can be impartial. I believe that he is, he, I want to say, with all due respect, his rhetoric is not as loud as I think some people have been, or some people portray him to be. I believe he does feel that he's had some issues that were unfairly promoted within the town staff and within the police department. But I believe he's answered them admirably. And I'm confident, I'm also confident that if, if you want to get a whole panel of everybody that wants to sit down and agree on everything that you talk about, go ahead, but what's the point? If you don't have someone willing to ask the hard questions and looking for hard answers, I mean, that's kind of the point of this committee. Is to make Groton better and to advocate not only for the citizens, but also on behalf of the police department as well. That's my comment.
Thank you for that information.
I see Counselor Casieri's hand is up. Counselor Casieri, the floor is yours.
Thank you for recognizing me, Chair Bumgarner. I would just like to note that at the beginning of this agenda item, Counselor Bumgarner brought up the fact that we have a really hard time filling committees. And John Goodrich is already serving on the historical district board. And there are several people on this list that do not serve on a committee. So I would urge counselors to perhaps give someone else a chance to serve on this board. And also, I would like you to take note of the town manager's email recommending that John Goodrich not serve on this committee. Thank you.
Counselor Westerville?
With all due respect, I do take note of that email. And quite frankly, there are parts of that to me that are disturbing. Because I do not believe that it is the town manager's responsibility to, or his right to direct us what we should or should not do. Further, in that email, he represents that he will not require police participation until the issue is corrected. So basically, he's telling us not to vote this gentleman on. And he's telling us if we do, he's not going to require police participation. The definition for that out of the, out of the dictionary is coercion. It's not fitting for the senior executive for the town of Groton to tell us how to do our job. Last time I checked, he works for the town council. We don't work for him. This committee was put together to support committees within the town, but by the town council and not by Mr. Burt. So I don't believe he has the right to direct us in any fashion. It's also my understanding that Mr. Burt and Mr. Goodrich have spoken. And that some of the friction is hopefully, you know, being resolved. So I appreciate what you're saying. I would make a referral that the town manager, his actions with this email asking us not to do our job, or not to do something he doesn't want us to do, and then telling us he won't support this committee with police participation if we don't do his bidding. I believe that to be a serious stretch of his rights and responsibilities as a town manager. I'm done.
Okay, and I will know, Counselor Casieri, you may mention the fact that he serves on a commission, I believe. ABC, he, I believe he serves on the historic district commission as an alternate. He would have to resign from that position in order to serve on this group. And I would I believe he should be aware of that, and if he isn't, that that's just the way it would, the way it is. So is there, is there any other discussion?
The only other discussion is I'm I'm perplexed, as I mentioned earlier, that these candidates didn't come this evening. And one of my points for questioning was I wanted to find out the answers to these questions for people who I thought I would have had some concern with. So with that being said, and because John Goodrich is not able to attend and answer some of the questions I had. I will be abstaining from this because I don't feel I have enough information on his nomination. And it's because I don't know him, but that was what I thought was going to happen this evening, was to be able to ask him some questions. So I'll be abstaining because I don't feel I have enough information to support him on this committee.
Understood, Counselor McBride, and I would note that Mr. Goodrich did, did speak to our committee at the last meeting. He was the individual who was in the car who had some technical difficulties in the, on his car ride. But he did speak to our committee already and answered questions, though, to your point, not specifically, you know, about speaking to some of the concerns that were brought up this, this.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. I still had, I still, that meeting wasn't, anyway. I understand what you're saying, thank you.
You're very welcome, Counselor McBride. I, seeing no other discussion, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries two, zero, with one abstention. So we have ourselves a slate. Congratulations to Mr. Goodrich, Mr. John Goodrich, Republican. Mr. Randall Ortega, unaffiliated voter. Mrs. Dana Parfit, Republican. Miss, Mrs. Tammy Dela Cruz, Democrat. Mr. Kyle Mesia Thaxton, Democrat, and Ms. Kathy Velez, Democrat, to serve on the Police and Citizens Committee. They will now go to town council for confirmation. And as soon as the council votes on those nominations, they will be members of the Citizens and Police Committee. So we have a full slate. I will now move to, I will make a motion to approve Robert H. Boland to the library board. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bumgarner, second by McBride. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing Mr. Robert Boland to the library board, please indicate by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Congratulations, Mr. Boland, for your appointment to the library board. Now on to Shante Duson. I will make a motion to appoint Shante Duson to the Permanent School Building Committee. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Bumgarner, second by Westerville. Any discussion? I would just like to note, Ms. Duson did did speak with our committee at our previous meeting and a very impressive application, resume, and interview. So seeing no other hands, I will call for a vote to appoint Ms. Shante Duson to the Permanent School Building Committee. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. I will note, we have two applications for the Housing Authority. Mr. Dane Stevenson and Ms. Denise Taveras. Mr. Stevenson, his application has been in the queue for since, I believe January or February. Bear with me. His application has been in the queue, however, we did receive an application from Denise, Ms. Denise, Denise Taveras. Given that Ms. Denise Taveras, her application has due to the fact that she is an unaffiliated voter and has not been endorsed by a committee, we cannot act on her application yet. So I would like to just, I would defer the Housing Authority appointments until we can actually hear from Ms. Taveras. And we can actually, actually act on our application as a matter of fairness. And also provide the opportunity for Mr. Stevenson to speak to our committee regarding his interests as well. So I would like to defer that application if that is the consensus of the committee. Excellent. All right, and I would like to, as we discussed earlier, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. James Filipina to fill the, to fill now the newest vacancy of the zoning board of appeals. So moved. Motion by Bumgarner, second by McBride. Any discussion? I will note, Mr. Filipina, his application has been in the queue for a little while now. He did apply for the zoning board of appeals. We filled a vacancy last, at the last meeting. We appointed Mr. Bruce McDermott to the zoning board of appeals. And so, given the vacancy that occurred this day due to the resignation of Mr. Dick Fitzgerald, we will be we will be making the motion now to appoint Mr. Filipina to fill that vacancy. So seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Congratulations, Mr. Filipina. Now on to ad hoc appointments. This is our last item on the agenda. These appointments were made by Mayor Melendez. And these are for, the personnel appointments committee will make the recommendations below to the full town council. The Cable Television Advisory Council has one vacancy. And the town council slash RTM slash Board of Ed has two vacancies remaining. So any counselors who may want to serve on those, feel free to share that with Mayor Melendez. But in the meantime, I will make a motion to recommend the town council approve the following miscellaneous and ad hoc appointments. Children for Groton, Mayor Juan Melendez, Economic Development Commission liaison, Counselor David McBride, Gulf Advisory Board, ex officio nonvoting member, Counselor Rachel Franco, Long Island Sound Advisory Council, Counsel, Counselor Andre Bumgarner, Peak Bot Woods, Board of Trustees, Counselor Rachel Franco, Southeast Area Transit, Mayor Juan Melendez, Southeastern Connecticut Regional Resources Recovery Authority, Counselor Andre Bumgarner, Southeastern Connecticut Water Authority Representative Advisory Board, Counselor Portia Bordelon, Town Council slash RTM slash Board of Ed, Counsel, Counselor Melinda Casieri, and Counselor Juliet Parker, and Trails Coordinating Task Force, Counselor Bruce Jones.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. That concludes the, our business for this evening, unless there is any other business from town council. Excellent, job well done. I will note, we have gotten through a host of reappointments and now appointments for various boards and ABCs. I think there are just a handful of vacancies left for some boards and commissions. And if there are vacancies, there are alternate positions, so job well done. We will continue vetting applications for any vacancies may arise from here on out. But I expect, you know, very quick meetings in the future and very little business. So, so job well done. And with that, I will call for a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
I will call for a vote. All those in favor of adjourning our meeting, please indicate by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries unanimously, three, zero, zero. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I will adjourn this meeting at 6:33 PM.
Take care, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, you as well, Counsel McBride. Thank you, Counsel Westerville, and good evening, everyone. Thank you, Counsel Casieri and Representative Jacob, Representative Thomas. Have a good evening.